We will call this meeting the Hanover County Board of Education Order. I would ask if everyone would please stand for the invitation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Gracious God, we come before you tonight asking your blessings on this meeting. We are thankful that we are permitted to live in a country where governments can change and change is accepted peacefully without violence and turmoil. As this Board of Education moves towards a new time of restructuring, and we pray that the newly-elected Board members will continue the work that this Board has developed in their programs that will serve the best interest of all our children, teachers, and administrators. Grant us the wisdom and courage tonight to make wise and thoughtful decisions, to have civil discourse, and to work harmoniously towards maintaining a quality educational system where all children are provided the opportunity to receive a quality education. We pray for all those who serve to protect us, for our military men and women, whether they are here or overseas, and for all law enforcement, firemen, and first responders. Keep them safe from all perils that they may face and grant them a safe return to their families. These things we humbly pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Aye, aye. Everyone may be seated. All right, you've got the microphone. Yeah. Let me just simply say, our National Anthem was performed by Trask Middle School Chorus. Dr. Maggie Olson is the principal instructor, Sarah Bishden. And if you would introduce yourselves and tell us what grade you're in. Thank y'all. Our honor guard for posting the colors are from E.A. Laney, Air Force JROTC, Principal Sharon DeSharm, instructors Colonel Thomas Harrison Smith, and Master Sergeant Bruce D.C. If y'all would introduce yourself, give us your rank and what year you're in.
I'm Cadet Captain Arthur Sawyer, and I'm in the 12th grade at Laney High School.
I'm Cadet Cody Simmons, Chief Master Sergeant. I am a junior at E.A. Laney High School.
I am Cadet Master Sergeant Bart Williams, and I'm a junior at E.A. Laney High School.
I'm Cadet Second Lieutenant Nam. I am a junior at E.A. Laney High School.
Thank all of y'all for participating. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Edward P. Higgins.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janet A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Lisa M. Dusette.
Here.
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Bruce K. Charles.
Here.
David L. Warman.
Here.
You have before you the agenda. There's one item that I would like to have the superintendent add, and that is a very brief report from my attending the Fall Law Conference this month.
So we'll label that H under New Business?
No, it's not under business. Why don't we just put it C under Information?
All right, works there, too.
All right. It's going to be very brief. All right, with that amendment, do I hear a motion we approve the agenda as presented?
Salute.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Approval of the minutes, excuse me, approval of the minutes for July the 10th, 2018 Regular Meeting, August 21st, 2018 Redistricting Work Session, September 26th, 2018 Special Meeting Minutes, and October the 9th, 2018 Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion that we approve all of those?
Salute.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Ms. Quinabam.
Recognition with a highlight of one of our community partnerships with a very, very prestigious organization of service here in the city of Wilmington. So at this time, I would like to present one of our former teachers and educators, Ms. Wanda Sloan, who serves as the President of the Wilmington Chapter of the Links Incorporated and Links member, Dr. Khadijah Reed, along with Ms. Dion Sternavent, who is our principal at the Rachel Freeman Elementary School, and they will share with you how this organization supports our students at Rachel Freeman and the STEM Specialty Program. Ms. Sloan.
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight. Would you like me to go ahead? The Wilmington Chapter of the Links, we have our members that are here this evening. Is it okay for them to stand? The Links Incorporated was founded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on November the 9th, 1946 by Margaret Roswell Hawkins and Sarah Strickland Scott. They invited seven of their friends to join them to organize a new type of inner-city club. Link and friendship, connected in service. The Links Incorporated defines itself as a group of friends committed to educational, cultural, and civic activities with the singular purpose of serving community needs for the improvement of life and the pursuit of excellence. The co-founders envisioned the inner-city club to support a relationship among women which would bring together, that is linked together, talents with needed, services, seekers with targets, and abilities and resources with hopes and ambitions. Some of our core values are responsibility, respect, commitment, service, friendship, integrity, family, honesty, and accountability. Excuse me. The members of the Links Incorporated engage like-minded organizations and individuals for partnerships to work toward a common vision. Presently, our national president is Dr. Kimberly Jeffers Leonard. We are a group of nearly 15,000 professional women in 41 states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the United Kingdom, consisting of 288 chapters. Some of our famous members include Kamala Harris, U.S. Senator, Condoleezza Rice, the former Secretary of State, Patricia Roberts-Habers, former U.S. Secretary of HUD, Constance Baker Motley, former U.S. Senator, the former Liberian President, civil rights activist Rosa Parks, and singer Leotine Price. The Wilmington, North Carolina Chapter of Links was chartered on April the 7th, 1951 by 10 members, and the chartering was led by Mrs. Celeste Burnett Eaton. On April the 16th, 2016, the Wilmington, North Carolina Chapter celebrated its 65th We are an organization of service. Our members contribute more than 1 million documented hours of community service annually. Some of the awards that we have received from other organizations for our premier programs are the U.N. Association of New York and the Leon H. Sullivan Foundation.
So now I have the distinct pleasure of talking about some of the things that we do around the country, around the world, and locally in Wilmington, including our partnership with Rachel Freeman. This is the exciting stuff for us. Where our organization is divided into five different facets: Services to Youth, the Arts, National Trends and Services, International Trends and Services, and Health and Human Services. So we have national initiatives, and then we have local things we focus on in our Wilmington community, and the other chapters focus on their respective communities. We, some of our national initiatives include STEM, and I'm sure you guys are very well aware of STEM, turning into STEAM now. The Lead Program, Links Educate, Accommodate, and Develop with High Expectations, among many others. We've provided scholarships locally to nursing students. We've donated about $10,000 to Voorhees College, which is a historically black college and university. We have provided gift cards to our kids at Rachel Freeman during Thanksgiving, small things and large things that we're super proud of. One of the bigger things that we really were proud of is taking our ladies, we have 20 young ladies we work with at Rachel Freeman, we took them to the African-American History Museum, the New Cultural Museum in Washington. So I have to say, we inspire one another because Link Emma, who many of you know very well, brought this idea forth as if it was just an idea, and the next thing we knew, we all had assignments, and it was done. You know, we were happy to take these ladies, and they enjoyed it. They had a great time, and we enjoyed it. We also started a NESB chapter. For those of you who don't know, NESB is the National Society of Black Engineers. So we started a junior chapter with our girls, because what we're doing is working with them on computer and coding. So we have a couple of our Links members who are super passionate about coding and said, let's introduce these to those, these girls, and we've been able to incorporate fashion within it and different things that really appealed to them. So we're super proud to have started this DESB junior chapter with our Rachel Freeman ladies. In addition, one of our facets is the arts, so major things with the arts nationally, but I'm going to stick it up to more excitedly Wilmington, what we've been doing here. Last year, I think two years ago, actually, we focused on the arts in our fundraising brunch, and we had local talent. We had a cellist come play. We had a young woman come dance, and we had our own Marva Robinson, who is also a Links sister and Director of the Williston Alumni Choir, perform, perform, so to speak, we can say perform, but she entertains us every year, so I welcome each of you guys to come to our brunch every year we have it. And she came and moderated the fashion show, which is always, like I said, quite entertaining, something to see. Some of the things we did with the girls with regard to the arts include a Mardi Gras celebration or making African masks. Health and Human Services, some of our larger national goals include St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, donating there, The Heart Truth, donating there. Locally, we just finished completing the Kate Fearhart Walk as a local community team, which was also super fun, and this is something we've participated in annually. Linking for Healthier Hearts was a newer event that we did last year where we had community members come and we talked about what do we need to do with our diet. We talked about a film, we talked about soul food, and the role of soul food in the history of African-Americans. So just really fun and educational events for the community. With the ladies at Freeman, we've done different activities, have the health department come and talk to them about different exercises. One of my favorites, and I will say this is one of the events that I did with the young ladies, is taking different oils, olive oil, I'm sure none of you know about this, but your reused fish oil, your reused bacon oil, and we show them how it saturates and what it looks like, and now what effect does this have on our arteries and our hearts. So you can see the integration of the Health and Human Services with the science. Now, the reason that this particular activity appeals to me so beautifully is because when I was about their age, I was in elementary school, and we went to our local science center, and a beautiful young African-American woman came in, and she did this with us. And needless to say, I went home to my Nana and I said, that bacon grease is a no-no, you can't do that. So you can imagine she didn't take to that so well. But every day when we work with these girls, we're hoping that those little beautiful lessons that were passed on to us that helped us become the professional women that we have become, we can just pass a little bit on to them. Now, I should be very clear, my situation can't compare to theirs, okay? I grew up with a single mom, but my mother would have lived in a half-a-bedroom apartment to live in a beautiful school district. She had a legacy of education, and so she passed that on to me. So although I was not privileged, I was privileged in the sense that I knew how important education was. Unfortunately, these young ladies would come to school every day after hearing gunshot wounds, gunshots, rather, in their community, or knowing that one of their family members is going to prison. So the stresses that they face are nothing compared to what I faced in my life. National Trends and Services, I think, national initiatives include things like AARP, Links Academy, and Black Lives Matter. But locally within Wilmington, we participated in voter registration drives. Our members have individual interest in these things, so it works well for the organization as well. We've done talks with the ladies at Freeman about the voting process and the elections process. We've had their butler, Representative, come and speak with the ladies. International Trends and Services, so this is one that we're especially proud of here in Wilmington. Our local chapter helped a school in Haiti get a water filtration system, and so that they would have clean water to drink when they came to school every day. And this was a very hands-on activity. As you can imagine, you can't just mail something off to Haiti, the system does not work that way. You have to be in touch with people and be in the loop so that you can make sure your supplies get there well. So that's one of the international things that we're so, so proud of, among so many We each have beautiful stories of working with these young ladies and beautiful stories of our work here in Wilmington and nationally, as well as internationally, and we're so proud that you chose to honor us and allow us to work with these beautiful girls. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, as the principal of Rachel Freeman, I have been warmly welcomed to Freeman by the Links, the Links group, not only working with those 20 girls, they have reached out to all of my students. During the hurricane, I don't have a, our makeshift conference room is a room full of supplies that directly impact the students that we need, that are in need, anything that they need. We are really serious about branching off our coding and having our coding, each grade level, have a master, they become a steward of that level of the coding, so we're going to branch each year, kindergarten masters of level coding, first grade masters of level coding, and so it's very, it's very important for our students to see positive role models and that there are other things to do outside of what they see day-to-day in their neighborhoods. So I thank you.
Anyone have any questions? I want to take this opportunity then on behalf of the Board to thank you for what you're doing and for the inspiration you are bringing to young women at Rachel Freeman and to all the students at Rachel Freeman. So again, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much for being here. We apologize that we had some technical difficulties, but the Board has your presentation and they will be able to see it. You all do great work, and we're most appreciative of you. Our next, thank you. The Board would like you all to introduce yourselves. Would you stand up? Because we do have this one that I know y'all know, Ms. Emma Jackson, who is one of the lead leaders of Links for many years, but if you all would please stand up, and you have to go to the mic so the audience can hear you, please.
I'm Wanda Sloan.
Khadijah Tribé Reed.
Jennifer Terrell.
Shamika Shuford.
Frida Brady.
John C. Davis.
Dr. Aquaneta Wheeler, and a member of the D.C. Virgo Advisory Board.
Sabra Wright.
Emma Jackson.
Is green the organization color? Is green the organization color?
Watch this, thank you.
For our next recognition, we would like to honor the service and dedication of the Hogarth High School Booster Clubs. It would be very difficult to measure the value of their service, and tonight we want to honor those organizations for their support at Hogarth High School. When I call your name, if you're here, would you please come forward and remain standing with our Chairman for a group picture? First, Ms. Latasha Murray, who is the Chairperson for Hogarth's NJROTC Booster Club, Ms. Murray. She did a sneak root on... Next, Ms. Lisa Scribner of the Band Booster Club from Hogarth. And finally, Ms. Lorraine Lee, Co-Chair of the Hogarth Athletics Booster Club. If our Hogarth Principal, Ms. Bill, is here, could you please come forward? Okay. Well, on behalf of the Board and senior staff, Principal Bill, and the school leaders you work closely with, we thank you for volunteering your time and for your service to the great Hogarth High School.
Folks, all of our booster clubs out there give an amazing amount of time and resources to our schools, both academically, athletically, and in those schools, and our schools would not function without those parents. So again, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Wellmers to come up, who will recognize our Educators of the Year. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Quinabam. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, it's my pleasure tonight to recognize New Hanover County's Teachers and Principal of the Year, and to present them publicly with a certificate basically enabling them to go to a national conference of their choice and to participate in that conference, the goal there being that they're going to represent New Hanover County schools very well. They'll bring back information from the conference that we can help in their school, with their school, and with their students, and it's somewhat of a reward for the very, very good work they've done with the students of New Hanover County. So with that, I'd like to invite them to come up, and we'll receive this little certificate. I'd first present to Ms. Lober, Carrie Lober. Ms. Lober's a teacher at Trask Middle School. Next is Ms. Catherine Coleman. Ms. Coleman is a teacher at Hogarth High School, teaches English. It's good to see you. And then we have Ms. Kristy Howe. Ms. Howe is our Elementary Teacher of the Year, and she is also the New Hanover County Schools Teacher of the Year. So she is representing us both at her school level, and she's representing us throughout the state. And I'd just like to announce that what happens here is there are regional competitions, so to speak, that Ms. Howe goes to, and they review the record that she has with us, and they get to talk with her and have a little chat, and then they choose two semifinalists from that group, and Ms. Howe is one of those semifinalists. So we congratulate her. Yes, just like to say, one of the best rewards is Ms. Howe gets the use of a Toyota Prius for a year, from Hendrick's Toyota, and she's done very well. You haven't hit anything with it yet, have you? God, very good, very good.
We got you covered.
You think that's funny, a couple of years ago, we did that, and about two weeks later, I got a call and said, well, I rear-ended somebody. So... Finally, and certainly not last, we'd like to recommend, recognize Ms. Krista Holland, who is our Principal of the Year. Want to thank these ladies for everything they do for this system, and they do an excellent job, and they will represent this system throughout this year as our Educators of the Year.
I get so excited when I see them, they're awesome. Thank you. So this next recognition is amazing. We have the opportunity to congratulate two of our students who have received national recognition, and this is from, for the NAACP Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics. Can't say that three times fast. Also known as ACTSO. The ACTSO Award is a year-long achievement program designed to encourage high academic and cultural achievement among African-American high school students. ACTSO includes 32 competitions in STEM, Humanities, Business, and the Arts. These students, who happen to be siblings, each earned a $1,000 scholarship and received a new iPad 6 for their award. So students, when I call your name, would you please come forward? And you should know, Board members, that these are the children of one of our own administrators, Ms. St... Ms. Stephanie Bolden, assistant principal at Laney High School. These are her outstanding, excellent children. Cameron Martin, who's a senior at Isaac Bear Early College, earned the bronze medal in playwriting. Cameron. And his sister, Kennedy Martin, is a junior at Laney High School, and she won a bronze medal in sculpture. Ms. Bolden, would you please come up here with your children? Congratulations to the Bolden-Martin family. And finally, we have another very special recognition. This is a young man who represented our district at a national conference. Wilmington's Disability Resource Center recently awarded the DRC Leadership Scholarship to attend the Association of Programs for Rural Independent Living's National Advocacy and Leadership Conference in Denver. So, at this time, I'm very proud to introduce you all to Zachary Parkinson Bell, a senior at Laney High School. Zach, would you please come forward? If you have any family members, if Zach's family would like to come, we would love to honor you for this outstanding young man. Congratulations, Zach, on your honor, and thank you for making us so very proud. Thank you, Mom.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the call to the audience. I would remind each speaker, it's limited to three minutes, however time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limp discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Having said that, the first name I have is Candace Thompson. Is Ms. Thompson here?
No, I don't see her.
Okay.
But I've spoken with her, we're gonna, we're gonna meet, she's out of town tonight.
Oh, okay, very good. Pamela Broadbeck.
Good evening. I'm here as a representative of teachers and staff at Eugene Ashley High School, who publicly opposed the addition of 20 minutes to all school days from December through June. You have a copy of the petition? We are in agreement with the notion of being accountable for instructional time. Our stance, however, is in opposition to this specific schedule change. Our main concerns are listed and include: This proposal disregards schools with blocked scheduling. This proposal does not address the imbalance between the instructional time in fall and spring semesters. This proposal does not align with New Hanover County Schools' goal to establish normalcy for our students and our community. Please consider the ramifications of altered daily morning and evening routines, traffic patterns, and commuting times for displaced families and buses, jobs held by students and staff, childcare, athletics, and other aspects of daily life for thousands of people in our county. This proposal mimics the schedule change of March 2014, which proved instructionally ineffective and challenged morale. This proposal does not honor the forgiveness granted by our state superintendent and general assembly in their leadership efforts to alleviate additional burden to North Carolina families. If these signatures represent just one school, we feel confident that there are many other employees who share our same concerns in a school system of this size. We ask this question: Is our goal to complete the task of making up minutes, or is our goal to recover instructional time in an impactful and purposeful way? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Takiisha Johnson.
Good evening. I am Takiisha Michelle Johnson of Education Inside Out, and I am the founder and executive director with more than 20 years in education. And Education Inside Out was started to bridge the gap between home and school by preparing and empowering parents and teachers to properly and effectively impact the lives of children. As a result of what we do, parents and teachers build better relationships, establish consistency, and maintain control in their homes and classrooms. I'm sure by now, you're wondering, how do we do this? I have developed a training, a training that's based on years of best practices as well as additional research that's gathered from sources such as the Annie E. Casey Foundation. These advocates support families during school meetings on behavior or academics. Then, they do something that is even more helpful. They set up appointments to go home with the parent and family to assist them with putting structures in place at home to improve school behavior or academics, therefore increasing the hope of success for the children. We even hold an event called the ABCs of Testing that provides, that provides parents with information that they rarely obtain, for various reasons, from schoolteachers, administrators, and other important school personnel. Our purpose here this evening is to make you aware of our existence here in the city and to let you know that we have already begun impacting families here in New Hanover County Schools, and to also be recognized by New Hanover County Schools as an organization that is approved to be invited in by school personnel or parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Ricky Meeks.
Yeah, time plug, that's wonderful. Let's go. Mr. Chairman and school board members of the Hanover County, I want to say thank you for all you've done for this great school system the past year. You chairman, I want to say thank you for your years of service here, Mr. Higgins, and also Jeanette Nick, I mean, Jeanette Calvin, I want to say thank you for your years of service, and also, dear friend of mine, Bruce Schell, thank you for your service, and last but not least, my former assistant principal of 1982-83 school year at Williston Junior High School, home of Tigers, Trojans at the time, Mr. Donald S. Hayes. I want to say thank you so much for what you've done. I've been in your shoes many times, debates and stuff, and I know what you're going through, I never won anything, but it's been a privilege to be in a great American citizen. This past Sunday, at 7:00, I turned 50 years old. It's a privilege to be 50 years old, it's a milestone to be 50. I also want to say thank you for having the hurricane shelters at Hoggart High School, Eaton and Trask. I spent the nights in our old gym at Hoggart High School from a Tuesday night through a Friday morning, didn't have electricity in my apartment from a Friday morning until Thursday, and I stayed in a shelter from Tuesday night until third, Friday in a wheelchair. And there were some trying times. We had food, we had good food, we had a lot of good milk, drank plenty of room temperature water, lost a little bit of weight. And I also want to say thank you to Mr. I O'Brien, who's here, who would help, been there, we served nights, and I went to school with him at Williston under Mr. Hayes. I was in the eighth grade and he was in the ninth grade. He remembered me, but I don't remember him. And so, and then, and then I want to just say thank you again for Dr. Tim Mark for coming on that Friday morning, I gave him a hug, and him and chairman, school board members, Zappel and John Barfield was there. When you go through hurricanes and your electricity's out, and you go through a hurricane and no electricity for many days, it gets very, very trying time and very, very emotional. I just want to say thanks again for opening the shelters for the Virgo Red Cross. We have wonderful New Hanover County employees who manned the shelters, and good luck and God bless the New Hanover County Board of Education members. See anything I can do for you, take care, and by the way, give that by a pay raise.
Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Report. Mr. Schell.
It's always nice to hear from Mr. Meeks. This is my last report to this board as a liaison to Head Start, and for the benefit of the community, Head Start is a federal, federally funded program for some 260 pre-K children. This board serves as a fiduciary, in a fiduciary capacity, and that's very serious as you make policy decisions relating to this program. The program is audited by the federal government, and it is headed up by Ms. Smiles, Shannon Smiles, and do an excellent job with that. You have before you a liaison report that talks about the demographics of those 260 children. I won't go through all of that since you have it, and it is accessible to the public. I will point out in there that Coastal Horizons has hired a therapist to serve our center, which is Johnson Pre-K, for school-based mental health, and that was something that has been a real plus for the, for the program. Johnson Pre-K Center staff hosted a hurricane relief event that was volunteer-funded that provided hot meal and supplies for approximately 200 families. 16,000 diapers, wipes, 400 bags of food, clothes, cleaning supplies. My point is, they stepped up when there was a need, and that's the kind of energy and passion that you have and that you need in a program like this. Are there any questions about that report?
Any questions?
If not, the second item on the agenda for Head Start is the monthly report, and I'll point out for the benefit of those seeing this for maybe the first time, that this is a 1.9, almost $2 million program that provides for salaries and benefits as well as services for these 260 children. And it, being a federal program, there are certain requirements that Ms. Smiles administers and monitors. One stipulation is in local government, whether it's schools, or counties, or cities, or state government for that matter, you have a June 30 year end, and this being a grant, the year end is different, it's 9/30 or September 30th. So, here we are through April, and we've not, we would be, let's see, that's five twelfths, if I'm thinking right, Mary Hazel. So, five twelfths would be, what would that be? Okay. The point is that, point I'm making is, we are under budget, and it's being managed well. Mary, Ms. Smiles, would you like to add anything to this? Okay. Any questions about it, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is Item A, 2018-2019 Low Performing School Plan, Appendix C. Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring before the board the low-performing school plans for those schools within our district that have been identified as low-performing. This information is for your review. Following your review, we will make these plans available on our district website so that it is publicly available. They're currently available at the school websites, but we will make them available at the district website, and we'll ask the public for comment. In December, I will bring them back to the board after we've reviewed the comments, shared those with the schools, and schools made any adjustments in the plan that they seen necessary for your approval. Just a little background and some context, low-performing schools are defined by the North Carolina General Assembly and are based on the school performance grades as well as the EVOs growth. We are very pleased in the fact that all of our schools this year met, but in the definition that has been determined by the General Assembly, it is not enough to meet your growth expectations. If you have a school performance grade of G, you have to exceed those. So, these schools have met their growth expectations, they are trending in the direction that we want them to trend in, just unfortunately, they did not exceed those growth expectations. They are required to use very specifically a school improvement planning management tool called Indistar, excuse me, NCstar, and you will see detailed in each report for each school, and it's, it's rather lengthy, and the reason for that is because the schools not only document what they're working on, but they capture the history along the way. So, each school has identified for itself its mission, its vision, and goals very specific to that school, and then they are to choose specific key indicators that have been identified by the state, and there are 12 specific key indicators that schools are required to work on, but there are, I think, an additional 124 that they can select from. In that, they identify the effective practices related to that. The school will conduct, conduct an initial assessment for each of those indicators, and then they will talk about what it will look like once those indicators are fully met. So, again, there's a lot of detail in each of those plans, but we do have representatives from, I believe, all the schools and are willing to, are able to answer any questions that you might have specific to any of those schools or any of those school plans.
Does anybody want to ask any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
These are annual reports that are updated based on what the school has done the year before, correct?
Yes, they are a continuation. In our low-performing schools, they are required to use this specific system, and it will detail what they've identified as the key indicators for this year, but also provide to the public evidence of what they've worked on in the past as well.
Other questions?
You've got later in the agenda, the report, the, the school reports in terms of academic performance, so there'll be an opportunity to look a little deeper into some of that data if you have questions.
And, and I'll also share, last year, we brought before you, I believe it was nine schools that were on this list, and this year, it is only five.
Good.
And there are no F schools in the district this year.
Good, good, outstanding. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Item B, Quarterly Budget Summary. Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to present this report for information. You may recall, in the, in the spring, we brought a new requirement from the local government commission where you approved a resolution for our use of electronic, electronic payment systems, and they also required that you have a quarterly report of all of your budget, expenditures, and encumbrances, which include any reserves for the P card, so... which include any reserves for the P card. So those are included for you. To date, we've spent 32%, spent or encumbered 32% of our budget. And we're also in the process, process of finalizing our year-end financial statements for June 30th. And so we're kind of presenting this quarter first, but we'll present year-end to you in January at the board meeting then.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Aye. Hearing none. Third item, and this will be very brief since I have been criticized of being long-winded in the past. I did attend the North Carolina School Board Association's Fall Law Conference. It was virtually totally on school safety, and I just wanted to highlight some things that, that I, I thought were interesting that I've already discussed a little bit with the superintendent. And if I'm not mistaken, the information and the handouts are currently on, online, if you would like to go and review them. One of the things that, that I got out of this was the fact that how prepared we as a school system seem to be when you look at other school systems. When I hear what other school systems go through, especially with SROs and all, we are thankful for the SROs that we have, for the training that they have, for Sheriff McMahon and what he does, and the numbers that are provided for us. So we are blessed. That's the best I can say about it. But what they did talk about, for example, were memorandums of understanding between the sheriff's office and the school district with respect to when the SRO gets involved and what they can and cannot do, and how they, how they should be incorporated into the, the process of school safety. The other thing they talked about a great deal was threat assessment, whether or not each school has a threat assessment team. If you recall, the shooting that took place a couple of weeks ago in Matthews, that there was indications that people knew that there was trouble between these two young men, and nobody said anything. Now, as I said to Dr. Markley, he said, "Well, if they didn't say anything, nothing would have happened." But I mean, there's a possibility that other people would have come forward and done something, and there would be a threat assessment evaluation. And the key thing that the lady who spoke about the parental involvement, the key thing was parental involvement, getting to the parents and talking to their parents and making sure that they understood that there were issues going on at the school with their child. So the threat assessment. And again, discussing when SROs should be involved. They did recognize Judge Corpenning for his work with the Schoolhouse to the Jailhouse program, and the importance that students' evaluations and student suspensions be carefully monitored so that they're not just routinely given out. And it seemed like that maybe in some school districts, that may be the case. I don't believe that's the case here. I think we have been very cognizant of that, but they did discuss that. There was a fairly extensive, all through the conversation, discussion of Title IX when it came to suspensions to make sure that, that everyone was aware of that, and also more so about Title IX when it involved issues of sexual harassment or sexual crimes and how they should be handled. Lastly, for what it's worth, the state of North Carolina is raising the age when a student becomes an adult for crimes. They still, severe crimes are still, a young person can still be treated as an adult for, but for most crimes, many crimes that currently a juvenile, an individual may be treated as an adult because the current age is 16, as of December 1st, 2019, the age goes to 18. And there's been some discussion, maybe even making it 19, but in any event, it's going to 18. So petty and less serious crimes of individuals who commit those crimes after December 1st, 2019, will be treated as juveniles instead of adults. They did make a big point of pointing out, now, if you commit the crime before, just because you get tried after December the 1st, if you commit the crime before December the 1st, you'll still be treated as an adult if you're between 16 and 18. So anyway, I, I found it to be very enlightening, worthwhile, and I highly recommend that those who are on the board might seriously consider at least sending one person, if not two, to the conference. I think there's one in the summer down in Carolina Beach, and there's another one in the fall. I guess it's the spring in Carolina Beach, and then the fall up in Asheville. So anyway, that's my report. Thank you.
Next, we have administrative recommendations. I have several that I'd like to, to move through. First one is Ms. Saber Wright. Currently serves as Title I Special Program Specialist for the county. Previously, he served as an AIG Specialist, Math Instructional Specialist at Gregory. She has taught at Gregory, Ogden, and Williams Elementary School, and in Lincoln and Belleville in Brunswick County. She has a BA degree in elementary ed from UNCW and a master's degree from Gardner Web, and her contract is effective until June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Prueville?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Did she hear?
Ms. Wright is here. You met her earlier when she was here there.
Okay.
Second recommendation, skilled trades supervisor in the maintenance department. The recommendation is William Michael Knoll. Currently, he is the HVAC Plumbing Foreman at New Hanover County and previously has served as the Service Manager for Watson Electric. He holds a technical certification, an HVAC license, and has served as project manager, subcontracting, cost containment, management relations, OSHA rules and regulations, workers comp, and air, air quality concerns, and quality control.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Prueville?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I don't recall, is this a new position? I don't recall this coming before us before.
Typically, we debated, a lot of times, it's, you'll see these on the, on the admin report, but it is a supervisor position, and we think the folks in maintenance deserve as much recognition as some of our other folks. So it's not a new position, correct, Eddie?
That's correct. This is not a new position.
This is one that's new to us to approve. Okay. Good.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions or discussion?
He's here. Oh, you got a vote for, excuse me.
All right. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Would he stand up, please?
Ms. Knoll? Typically, when you see him, he has on the Blue New Hanover County shirt from the Maintenance Division, so didn't recognize him coming in in the tie today. Eddie, anything you'd like to add?
I would just say that it's been a pleasure working with Mike so far and in his position as a foreman. He's very committed, and we've seen a lot of improvement in, in the Skills Trades Division, so I'm really looking forward to him taking over that division and working with him, seeing, seeing what, what we can do.
All right. The last recommendation I'd ask that we take as a group, this is a requirement of the legislature, and I'll ask Dr. Smith to explain the, the law behind it.
So yes, one of the requirements beyond sharing with the board the plans of the schools is that the superintendent bring forth a recommendation for the principals that are at that school. And the, and the superintendent has a list of recommendations that, that he can make. But as I shared with you earlier, all of our schools have met growth expectations. We're very pleased with the performance of how the schools are trending. Even one of our schools, well, we've had several schools in, in different areas that have actually exceeded the growth expectations in, in various areas. It's just the overall where they, where they met. So Dr. Markley, again, as required by that legislation, has to make a recommendation about the position of the principal.
So the recommendation is for continued in the positions that they are currently in. So I will read the list of names. Bonnie Hall at Forest Hills Global Elementary, Rachel Manning at Snipes, Dolores Overby, Wrightsboro, Deon Sturtevant at Freeman, and Ron Valines at Williston Middle School.
Do I hear a motion to approve those?
(inaudible).
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
All right. That concludes the administrative recommendations.
All right. Next item is the superintendent's report, Hurricane Update.
All right. Let me move down to the front on this one. Last month, I gave a pretty extensive update. This will be much briefer, just to get us up to date in terms of where we're at. Facilities updates. All schools were reopened for students on October 4th, with the exception of College Park, which reopened on October 8th at Castle Hain and Holly Shelter. The duration there will, has not yet been determined. We anticipate that that's going to, they will not return to the Sidbury Road site. We are possibly going to move them into their new school a little early, maybe over spring break. Eddie, anything you want to add to that?
That's correct. We're, we're trying to work with the contractor to accelerate construction and our furniture purchasing and deliveries. So that's, that's what we're targeting.
I understand that those fifth graders want lockers at their new school, because they love it at Holly Shelter.
Yeah, those fifth graders think they're in middle school now. It's been, if you get a chance, I would encourage you to go out and see that operation. It's kind of a neat, with three campuses, three schools on two campuses. They have integrated very well. The community support has been tremendous. There's still some issues. We're, we're working out with just that many students. Lunch is a little early for some folks, a little late for some folks. But as a district, the fact that we were the first district able to go back is really a testament to the folks who work in our district and, and the fact that we had the resources to be able to do that.
Can I ask one question about College Park? What is the, is there a plan for the, sorry, Sidbury Road, College Park? Can you give us kind of an update?
If we're able to, yeah. This will actually allow us to accelerate the conversion to C-Tech, and that would allow us to actually expand the enrollment next year. Because right now, we're constrained in terms of how many students we can take at, at C-Tech because of the facility piece, and we were concerned that we wouldn't be able to move over to Sidbury until middle of the year next year. This will allow us to roll into that school at the beginning of the school year and allow us to double that freshman class.
So the construction at College Park is focused more on opening Sidbury Road back at C-Tech instead of Studdale?
Correct. Eddie, anything you want to add to that?
That's correct.
Are we having to pay any extra to expedite the construction?
Now, because a lot of the, we're going in and making the repairs because of the hurricane, and so when we make those repairs, we're making it with the upcoming renovations as part of that. So we might even be able to squeeze a few pennies out of this that, in savings. I can't, I don't promise that, but by rolling into that, we're hoping we can actually save some dollars.
Sounds good to me.
Gregory and Williams returned to their own campuses on October 15th. I'd love to thank the staff at Snipes and Mary C. Williams. They were incredible hosts to those schools while they were there. So just a public thanks to all of those folks who made that, that possible. There are some mobile units damaged where work will continue. Alderman has lost a mobile unit, Bellamy Eaton Parsley Pine Valley, Laney Trask, Williams, Wrightsboro Beach. Most of those will be available in November. Some of them will not be available. So later, you'll see a request for class size waiver for schools that are impacted by the hurricanes. A lot of those have to do with mobile units. Any you want to add on mobile units, Eddie?
I would just say that, I think I told you before, I think the hurricane taught us a lot about mobile units and the construction, and the, the four mobile units that we most recently purchased didn't have any damage at all. So we have learned a lot about the construction of mobile units, and some of the ones listed on, on the screen, we have already moved back into. That happened on Monday, and the rest of them, we're working hard to get back in as soon as possible.
Do we have any that are damaged beyond repair?
There are several in Wrightsboro Beach that we probably will not replace. We have mobile units at the College Park Sidbury Road site that since we're going to go back, we won't replace those. We'll send those back to the, to the group we're leasing from.
And so then what happens if we send them back? Do we get new, new units?
Those were leased just specifically for College Park. All right. Next slide. Cost estimates are $9 million for emergency cleanup and repair. Permanent repairs and renovations are estimated at 3.3 million. So that means it took $9 million to fix what was there, and another $3 million to get it back to where it was. Because a repair may not have been at the same condition that it was before the hurricane, just so you understand that. Typical work consists of roof repairs, replacements, total water, retention pond, fences, trees down, casework, a lot of interior finishing. We tore out a lot of sheet rock in places and, and replaced that. And we're moving forward with permanent repairs and renovations.
Eddie, can you explain retention pond repairs?
Yes, ma'am. A lot of the retention ponds, just with the quantity of water, you know, we, we may have had some erosion. We may have had damage or debris in the pond, and periodically, we have to do maintenance on those and, and clean them out and bring those ponds back to the proper depth so that they're able to hold the quantity of water that they were permitted for, and...
And pump water in and take water out. How's that done?
Well, there's typically a four bay, and that would fill up first, and then it would go into the detention area. There's a outlet structure that is sized so that the water is released from the surface for water quality, and it's released in a controlled manner so for water quantity so that we're not flooding any of the adjacent properties.
Thank you.
Can, Dr. Markley, can you speak to, and you may be getting to this later, to those schools that had interior issues? I know, like, Williams lost a lot of their library. So what happens with, with that type of replacement, like, you know, the loss of books?
Just left Williams this morning. Their library books are back on the shelf. They had some donations from community groups, along with books that they already had. The companies that were doing the work for us actually did cleaning of those books. They were taken out of the library, placed in the controlled storage, cleaned, and then put back on the shelves, and they're, they're back up and running.
So they were able to salvage most of them?
Most of them. College Park, a lot of their library is still at Sidbury, but it is being cleaned before it comes back to them, and that'll be available for use over at Castle Hain.
So we didn't lose a lot of, of that type of thing?
Yeah. And I would like to thank the library, Mary Hazel and her folks. Got a huge donation from the library to help supplement those library books. And if we had excess books, we actually have sent some of those home with students. So we've been able to build some home libraries as well.
Do we know of any other student needs that are still outstanding?
There's a lot of quiet stuff out there. We still have some students in shelter. We probably have still about 300 who are classified as homeless. Our social workers are working with those on an individual basis at the schools. We are still getting some donations for those. We've gotten some grants for teachers as well, and we'll be working on those. Ms. Qualetbaum and the Public Information folks have really done a great job putting that all together and trying to match up those parents with needs. Dr. Holliday, anything you want to add there?
Thank you. Pretty well covered it. We are continuing to deal with needs as they come along, and Ms. Qualetbaum and her folks got one of our students that was in a shelter and featured her on the news last week, and it was a...
The New Hanover High School student?
Right. It was a very good story. And we have a lot of those that are, just like I said, quietly out there. The other thing that we have, and I'm sure Dr. Markley in mentioning this, is we still have about 75 of our folks who, who are, who are our employees who lost homes. They either significant damage to their homes, or they lost them completely. So these were our staff members as well as our students. So we're, we're, so they, they are dealing with the issues with the children at school and the... with the issues with the children at school and their own personal issues. A couple of stories have been featured, and Ms. Quaalbaum featured those of our staff, who, just unbelievable how they, you know, they were in the top part of their house when the storm, the big piece of the storm hit on Saturday night, when all that water came down. And it was, and their homes were like a mile and a half from the school. So it really kind of hit hard to some of our folks.
Has the ESP been helpful for the staff and faculty?
We've certainly made that available. And even our own teams working with staff members who need that help. So we're trying to get help to everyone who needs it.
I can't say enough about community outpouring donations that have come in. You've heard from Link, some of the work they did for students at Freeman. We're getting some of those donations. Some folks have donated gift cards for our teachers who are in need. Billy, anything you want to add on that outreach effort from our community?
Yes, we have so many people who keep calling, and they want to just bring tractor trailers loaded full of things. And our principals are calling me saying, Ms. Quaalbaum, please, we can't take anymore. So what we've been doing is redirecting them to Pender County and Oslo, because they are just getting back up, and they need those things more.
Pender, Oslo County actually finally got their last school open today, or this week.
Thank you.
Our budget impact, as we said, total cost for repairs and replacement is going to be approximately 12.4 million. To date, we budgeted $9 million. $6 million came from fund balance. $3 million has come from our estimated insurance proceeds. The state allotted us $4 million for hurricane disaster relief. Those funds will be budgeted in, coming out. We will be required to reimburse the state proportions recovered from FEMA or insurance. So that $4 million is sort of a backstop. If we, if we get the money back, then we'll give it back to the state. But if for some reason we don't get reimbursed, then that, we will not have to send that back. But most of that will flow back through to them at some point. There's a budget amendment on this coming up a little bit later. Mary Hazel, anything you want to add here?
No, that's, the only thing I'll mention is, we are, we're also requesting, maybe on the next slide, I can't recall, but of the $3 million we budgeted for insurance proceeds, we think it's going to be more like $500,000. So we are asking to shift that tonight to $2.5 million fund balance, and $500,000 from insurance. So it's still too soon to know. Hopefully FEMA will back that up. But we're not expecting to get as much as we originally thought from insurance.
All right. So it'll be on your action item is budget amendment three. So a net increase in the fund balance appropriations of 1.9 million, changing the 2.5 million from insurance proceeds to $500,000, reducing fund balance appropriation by approximately 600,000. And then the other restricted funds will be the $4 million from the state recovery.
Why are they not?
I mean, if we thought we were going to get something like $3 million, how did it get cut to 500,000? And I guess my question becomes, do we need to look for new insurance coverage?
All right. At this point, we are still in the process of processing the information for those claims. Wayne is heading that up with our risk management person, and folks from the finance and other departments. And what we're finding is, we had four schools covered by an outside flood aid company. Hartford, I believe, was the carrier. Those are the $500,000 in claims that have been processed fairly quickly. The DPI insurance, which is the bulk of our insurance claims, that's a slow process. And they are being a little bulky, would be the word I would use, in terms of what they're going to cover and not cover. And so we're, we have not seen that number yet from them. But I am concerned about what that's going to look like. What they don't cover, we then apply to FEMA for further reimbursement.
So it seems DPI is Department of Public Institution, right?
Public Instruction, yes.
Instruction, sorry. So basically, what DPI is doing is passing the ball from state funds to federal funds.
We haven't seen their final figure, but that's what it looks like. And you've got to remember, the DPI ensures about 60 of the 115 districts, and it does it sort of as a self-insurance pool, where they pool the money. Where we're running into issues is, there's a mold exclusion in the policy. And so there's a debate about what's the damage there. We contend that it's water damage. Buildings are designed for water to fall down, not to hit them at a 90-degree angle. So a lot of the water came in under windows or through windows. And we're having some issues with some of the roof claims. Wayne, anything you want to add to that so far?
No, I think that's an accurate assessment. DPI is just giving a very strict interpretation to the policy, apparently, based on some verbal communications that we've had. We're going to go ahead and submit the claims to them, and ask them to give us a response in writing. And then we'll decide where to go from there, and we'll bring any recommendations that we have to you as the board.
We're still early in that process. We anticipate by the end of the month, having those claims filed with DPI.
Is there a time deadline?
Sorry.
We have a 90-day period to submit the claims. And even that's a little loose on interpretation. We've notified them that we have claims. We did that almost immediately. But we'll still submit the actual documentation within the 90 days.
Have we been in touch with other jurisdictions, ELEAs about?
We've been working, the southeast superintendent's belong to a local, was called a RISA. And we just had a meeting on this recently, last week. In fact, Dr. Polliday was there. And they're running into the same problems. It's not a unique New Hanover issue.
Go ahead.
Is it, is it fair to say, I'm checking the assumption, but isn't it fair to say that to the extent that you have had damage from a declared storm, nationally and statewide, that to the extent that you have a legitimate claim, that you do not get insurance reimbursement, that FEMA is typically the backup to that?
Correct. FEMA is never the first rung. It is always, it's the top rung of the ladder. It's, they're the provider of last resort, or the reimbursed of last resort.
And the reason I bring that up is that we've got a lot of money at stake here. And you're relying on due diligence, and insurance, and all of those things. But your backup in this event of a national disaster is FEMA. So I think that puts the school system, at least long-term, at ease for getting your money back. If that'd be accurate.
In past storms, we have, it's just hard to tell. There was so much that happened at the same time, and, you know, so many, you know, with Florida head and us. So we just, to be safe, wanted to make sure that you understood there's a risk, and we wanted to go ahead and appropriate fund balance. And from what we understand, the FEMA process could take, you know, in terms of reimbursement, six months to two years, to get it all back. So we just wanted to go ahead and appropriate the funds. And then we will certainly keep the board updated as reimbursements are received.
One last question. This is a softball, I'll throw it at you. What would the New Hanover County schools do in this situation if you did not have fund balance?
We would not have opened. We'd have been with Oslo opening up this week. We maintain about a 6% fund balance, which is a fairly small amount. You've got to remember, our budget is well over $200 million. We're one of the large, we're the second largest employer. So, and 80% of our costs are direct personnel. So we keep a 6% budget, just to help us maintain cash flow. Because you heard Mr. Shell talk about, they're on a different budget cycle with Head Start. Well, the federal government operates on an October fiscal year. And there are times when the government says, we're going to shut down for a little while, or we haven't got a budget passed. And so with an October fiscal year, our fund balance allows us to carry over until the budget comes in from the state or the federal level. We saw during the recession, when the state was pulling back dollars. The fact that we had that fund balance allows us to continue forward. So 6% is not a huge fund balance. And we're going to draw that down to about the 2% to 3% range. And we'll get it back, but it's going to be a slow comeback. And that's a concern. So I will always advocate that we maintain a fund balance of 6% or better, just because of not only the issues with storms, but we've seen in just the eight years that I've been here, times when we've had to use that fund balance to cover just simple things like payroll.
Have we approached the county on some kind of deal, much like what you're talking about with the state money, that if they will advance us money, so we have a fund balance that we feel secure in, that if we get money back from FEMA or whatever for these purposes, that we would reimburse them, but would, at least temporarily, make us feel a lot more secure?
We're not in a position to have to do that. And you guys need to take a little point of pride in that, in that the fact that we have that fund balance means that we don't go, we don't have to go ask for them to give us money when they're trying to help other agencies. We've always advocated that our fund balance protects the county as well.
Well, I heard you just said, though, that we were getting down to like 3% or something. I mean-
We're not, we're not the point we have to do that.
I understand, we still have, we'll still have $5 or $6 million in the bank. That's assuming that this is a warm winter.
If we get to that, if we get to that point, that we have to have a conversation with them, then obviously, well, I'll be back. But I think we're going to be okay for this year.
Okay.
Mary Hazel, anything you want to add to that?
No, we were just very appreciative that we were able to get part of the state recovery money, and the second distribution of that, which is the $4 million, because we were looking at the possibility of deferring some capital projects. But now we won't have to, because they have up fronted that cash for us as well.
All right, FEMA. Few smaller claims for floods have been paid. Our main insurance claims to DPI, like I said, we anticipate filing by mid-November. It's clear right there, we said we're concerned that some of them are going to be denied due to their strict interpretations. A FEMA claim has been opened. That's a very labor-intensive process. And we've got our first meeting with our identified FEMA rep on November 14th. All right, that's where we are with the hurricane, folks.
Any questions? That's what we asked already. Any comments?
Again, that was for information.
Okay. All right. I have, okay, next item is consensus items. Personnel, Dr. Wilmus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters that's presented.
Subtle.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Budget amendment number three, Appendix F, Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think most of the, the majority of these amendments were just covered in the presentation. But there are some state adjustments, as well as additional allotment from DPI for Veterans Park boiler replacement project, and then the hurricane adjustments that were just discussed. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Move for approval for budget amendment number three.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? They are, it is approved. I have been asked to take a break. So we will take a reasonable break.
You gave up on five minutes?
I gave up on five minutes.